I would like to be tested by the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation under our indivisible, emperor, and just as well.
Good morning, Ms. Hoplon, if you'll read the TV announcement, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County Santa Barbara Television, CSB-TV, Channel 20, at 9:00 AM in the South Coast, Lompoc, Santinaz Valley, Santa Maria, and Orket areas. Rebroadcast of Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 PM on CSB-TV, Channel 20. And for the roll call, Commissioner Cooney?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Brooks?
Here.
Commissioner Valencia?
Here.
Commissioner Blau?
Here.
Thank you.
And Ms. Black, you have the agenda staff's report for us?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Good morning. We have four items on the agenda today, and we're ready to move forward with all four.
Great, and you'll have a projection report for us as well?
Yes. Actually, I have two projection reports. The first is the more specific projection report you have in front of you, which indicates what we'll be looking at in the next few hearings. So next week, we'll be meeting in Santa Maria, and we have a relatively full day for that hearing. We've already made the decision to cancel the February 18th hearing. So our next hearing will be in Santa Barbara back on March 4th, and we have a fairly full hearing on March 4th as well. And then March 11th, we'll be back up in the North County at the Bedaravia Hearing Room, and so far, we just have a few items on that day. I did, as your commission requested, look a little bit further into the future, and while I've certainly not captured every item, and it wasn't my intention to capture every item, I tried to project what we thought the workload of the commission would be this year in terms of larger projects, and I'd like to go ahead and pass that out. And then go over it with the commission briefly. So I started with the month of March, because I think we've got February fairly well tied down on our formal projection report. In March, we have items on your March 4th agenda, as you saw on the projection report, which seems as if it's fairly full. March 11th is fairly light, and I'm looking, at least preliminarily, to cancel March 18th. I believe the chair isn't going to be here that day.
Correct.
And it looks as though the workload may justify canceling that meeting. We have a couple of items projected in May, I mean, in April, excuse me. And I am thinking that we may want to at least project for April 15th being the Planning Commission retreat, because it looks as though we'll be light in April, and rather than cancel the meeting, we could have the retreat that day. As you can see, we've got a couple of community plans coming up, and some larger nurseries, we've got the Plantown Nursery, the Chisen Nursery outside of Los Alamos. The Santinaz Community Plan is projected to come forward in the April-May timeframe. In June, we've got a couple of larger projects, both the seismic safety and safety element and the Botanic Garden are projected for June, not quite certain on the dates, but can see that, a number of other smaller, relatively smaller projects. July, we have the, a number of relatively small projects, plus the annexation policy and potentially the GPS mine. August, we expect to be bringing the Galita Beach project to your commission, as well as the housing element and the Orket Community Plan Amendment Package. September, we've got another reclamation plan, a tract map on agricultural piece of property, and the Los Alamos Community Plan update and accompanying EIR. And then, you know, as the year progresses, it becomes less and less certain as to what will actually make it to your commission. October, we've shown the Las Varas tentative parcel map, that's a parcel map on the Gaviota Coast that we're currently preparing an in-house EIR on. November, we've got Key Site 3, and then the Summerland Community Plan Commercial and Residential Design Guidelines, and December, the Mission Canyon Specific Plan. So just gives you a little bit of a sense as to what's coming up for the year, and like I said, there will be other projects that will certainly fill in, and I'm going to hand out a project list in a few minutes as well to help you sort of understand that this is certainly not the totality of projects that'll be before the commission. But I'm going to be monitoring your agendas carefully, and I will try and take the opportunity to suggest cancellations or other business that we might conduct when permit applications are allowed.
Christopher Cooney has a question?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Ms. Black, with respect to February 11, I mean, let's see, it was March 11, I don't see the Scheller appeal continued there, but I think that was our action last week to continue it, to allow the parties to resolve the matter, hopefully.
Mr. Chair, I believe we continued that to March, I don't see it there either, is it on March 4? We actually continued that to March 4. I think, I believe that the commission thought that a little bit more time was warranted, and so I think we continued it to the 4th.
Even though that means in Santa Barbara, okay, thank you.
Actually, it doesn't say that on the agenda either, I don't have minutes either.
It's on, it's on page 2 of the projection report. The March 4th hearing is split between page 2 and page 3 of your projection report.
April 8, is that where you have?
I can check, Mr. Chair, I can check on that date if you think that that wasn't the date that was selected, but in any event, we'll reflect it properly.
Okay. So now, we'll go to public comment. So anybody in the audience that wish to speak on an item not on today's agenda can do so at this time. I need a speaker slip.
No speaker slip.
Speaker slip, so assume we don't have any of them. So now, we have Planning Commissioners' informational reports, do we have any of those? I see no lights, so we'll go to Planning Development Divisional briefings, do we have a briefing this morning?
Mr. Chair, just, just very quickly, I wanted to hand out the active discretionary projects by supervisory district for your commission this morning, so each of you will receive a packet, and they're individually stapled by district, in the order of district. So you can look at your district or the entire county if you like.
Okay.
So I'll just pass those out.
Okay. Why don't we just, I think maybe we just set it with our binders in the back, would that be okay? Good. No stuff on this desk already. And now, we have the minutes of January 21st to be approved, and I do have a comment on them.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, and I'll make a comment for some corrections. I think on item 1, where we added condition number 1, I think we need to take out the word Caltrans and put in County Roads Division. The issue of discussion was is that the existing condition gives Caltrans the right to do that, and what we wanted to do was change or modify condition so that there was an obligation for the developer to do the flight controls, and it had to be approved by the County Roads Department.
Mr. Chair, because the flag people would be on state highway, I think it does need to be approved by Caltrans. What I think we were trying to avoid was having Caltrans say it wasn't required, and that's why we have both Caltrans and Public Works. But because the flag control would be on a state highway, I think they do have to review and approve the plan.
That may be true, but the fact that they're accessing county roadway, I think also gives us the right to do it, so I think-
We have both. Caltrans and County Public Works.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Gotcha. All right, that being said, I don't have the corrections. Does anybody else have comments or corrections? Now, go ahead and ask for the roll call.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Vote carries 5-0.
Great, and do we have a director's report for the board's hearing summary?
Mr. Chair, we're with the board, good morning. Actually, no items that were before the board yesterday that are to report on. I would encourage, if you have time, to watch the board meetings starting yesterday through the end of this month, the four meetings, because they're very significant in terms of what's happening with this county, in terms of its revenues and its expenditures. Yesterday was the revenue picture, which I have to say, was, if you watched it, it was very bleak in terms of what's going on with our revenues. Next week, it's going to be dealing with the retirement issue, and if you've been reading the newspapers about other retirement plans, for example, yesterday's Sacramento Bee, Calpers, which is, you know, a very large group of people in terms of the, and a large group of employees that are dealing with the stock market and the like, says that their portfolio's down by one-third. And the way that retirement systems work, they smooth it out, so that you won't see the impacts of that Calpers thing probably until the 10, 11-year, but it's going to start hitting, and it's going to be significant. And I mentioned that to Mr. Geis yesterday, and he came back and said, ours is the same or worse. So, I mean, it's going to be, the impact is going to be significant. And the decisions that the board's going to have to make over the next four months are going to be really tough on them for services, so that, of course, impacts planning and development just as well as it does the other departments that are out there in terms of general funds. And as we've said to you before, our revenue picture is going this way in terms of what's happening with development, and you're seeing it really in terms of what's being shown to you here and in your projections going out for the rest of the year. And we expect that we will be down a significant amount throughout this year, and probably next. So I'll stop there. Not a good picture right now.
I just have one comment that I have on that issue, is that, and Mr. Caldwell got up and made a request that when projects are presented to the Planning Commission and to the board, that there should be information in that report regarding the financial impact of the project. And that's something I intend to discuss when we have our retreat, and I would encourage my fellow commissioners to meet with their respective supervisors and have a discussion with them on that issue. I, for one, would like to see, when projects come forward, that we have some kind of an estimate as to what the revenue is to the county, both for, I think it helps in aiding whether we approve the project or don't approve the project. I know in the past, we've had discussions that some feel that that's not our concern. I know, talking to my supervisor for the 5th District, it is a concern to him, and he thinks it's something that we should consider. So I would encourage my fellow commissioners to have that discussion with their individual supervisors, and we can talk about that at the retreat, to see if that's something we want to include in the reports that come forward.
One other item, Mr. Chair, the, I think it was reported last week, when I was not able to make the director's report, that the housing element had been, well, yesterday, there was a request for reconsideration, and it is going to be back on on February 24th for reconsideration of the decision that was made last week.
Great.
Can't predict what that will be, but reconsideration.
Anything further? Okay, we're going to-
Mr. Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I did have a question, Mr. Baker, perhaps, and Ms. Black is the one to answer it, has to do with action taken by the board at a prior meeting with regard to the Santa Barbara Ranch project. And it's unclear to me, it may be unclear to members of the public, exactly what the impact of the board's reconsideration of a closed-session item was on the project approval itself.
Mr. Chair, and Chairman, Commissioner Cooney, the decision, there was a demand for a reconsider, a demand for curing of a closed session. During that closed session, because there was an MOU which was part of a settlement of a lawsuit that, or stayed, at least it stayed that lawsuit, there was a decision to allow for bifurcation of the Santa Barbara Ranch project. I will say essentially below the freeway and above the freeway. It's not quite that clear, but clean, but essentially that. And then following that, there was a development agreement approved by the board to put that into, to firm that up. The demand for curing the item in terms of the closed session was made subsequently, and the board in closed session decided to vote, or 3 to 2 vote, that they would bring back and discuss that curing of that MOU. It's an amendment to the MOU, so if they decided to say that that was not valid in terms of the decision made in a closed session, then the amendment would be abrogated, and we would be back to the original MOU. That does not, however, take away the development agreement that was subsequently approved after that MOU amendment was approved. That was the statement by the county council at the board meeting last week.
So as I understand, the agreement, or an amendment to the agreement between the applicant and the county might be up for further discussion, but the project that the commission approved and the Board of Supervisors subsequently approved, with all of its conditions, limitations, et cetera, that's going forward and would not be subject to reconsideration?
That's correct.
Mr. Chair, I believe that county council is scheduling this for discussion on the March 3rd board hearing, so.
Okay, thank you. Do we need time to set up for item 1? Two minutes, okay, we'll just let them set up. In the meantime, Ms. Hoplon, do you want to read it into the record?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of Rick Schillinger, owner, to consider case number 07 TPM 13 TPM 14 738, application filed on November 15th, 2007, and to approve the negative declaration 08 NGD 21 pursuant to the state guidelines for implementation of SEQA.
And I'll now ask my fellow commissioners for ex parte discussions or site visits. Commissioner Cooney?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I did make a site visit earlier this week, I have had no ex parte communications.
Seeing no other lights, we're ready for our staff presentation.
Aaron Briggs, nice to see you again. This morning, I'd like to present to you the Schillinger lot split. The project site is located in an existing developed rural neighborhood at 6214 Via Real, just north of the Carpinteria city limits. The site is located within the coastal zone, is approximately 6.32 acres in size, and is zoned 3E1. The coastal land use plan intends the area surrounding the project site to function as a low-density residential buffer between the prime agricultural lands to the north and the urban land uses to the south. And here on this aerial, you can see that I put the urban-rural limit line here. The city of Carpinteria is located to the south, and the project site is kind of wedged in between avocado land here to the north and the city limits here to the south. The proposed project is a request for a lot split that would divide an existing 6.32-acre property into two resultant parcels of 3.12 acres and 3.2 acres. As you can see, development envelopes would be designated in the southern portion of the resultant lots to contain future development away from oak trees, steep slopes, and the onsite avocado orchard. And here is a close-up aerial of the subject parcel. You can see to the north, the avocados. This is a little bit less than three acres of an existing avocado orchard. The site then transitions into a north-facing slope, which is, has a lot of oak trees here, and then the southern portion of the parcel here, where the building envelopes would be placed. And so the project would split the parcel like that, and then place the building envelopes in the southern part there. A mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the project and circulated for public review. I did receive one comment from a neighbor that lives next door, and she was concerned about impacts to oak trees from future development, and I went back into the negative declaration and added some discussion about that, and also a condition which affords protection of the oaks during future construction. The issue area of concern with this project that really popped out to me as a planner was cultural resources, and we do have a significant archaeological site that's located in close proximity to the project site. A group of several mitigation measures contained within the conditions of approval would provide comprehensive protection of these sensitive resources, including full archaeologist and Native American monitoring of all future grading and utility trenching activities. The project would also include the installation of a GeoGrid fabric between the existing ground surface and the future access driveway to be developed on top of it, so that the GeoGrid would act as a cap to protect the resources underground, and then the future driveway could be laid on top of the GeoGrid. As conditioned, the project is consistent with the comprehensive plan, including the coastal land use plan, the Chapter 21 subdivision regulations, and the Article 2 zoning requirements. And I did pass out some minorly revised findings in your packet there, and staff's recommendation is to adopt the required findings, including the revisions that you received this morning, specified in Attachment A of the staff report, including the SEQA findings, approve the negative declaration included as Attachment C of the staff report, and adopt the mitigation monitoring program contained in the conditions of approval, and finally approve the project subject to the conditions included as Attachment B. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, on the, on the parcel map that I received, the neighbor has a garage that's going to be right on the property line. What are the problems with that and the setbacks and?
Commissioner, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Valencia, the garage that you are referring to is a little difficult to see here. There's a house located just next door, and it's, it appears to be right on the proper line, pretty much, and then there's a garage kind of hidden underneath these oak trees here. And as part of a past project, a previous planner had noticed that the corner of this garage actually protruded onto this property. And in response to that, the property owner cut a portion of their garage out to observe the parcel lines. So you're right, the garage is very close to the parcel line. We have taken note of that, but it doesn't, it's an existing condition that's been there for decades and doesn't affect this proposal.
So the people that are going to have ownership of parcel 1 don't have any problems with a setback from the adjoining property for this building, this garage?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Valencia, hard to speak for someone who may buy this property in the future, but from a planning standpoint, the development envelope there on parcel 1 does meet the requirements of Article 2, so.
I can see that parcel 1 meets them, but the property next door, they built something on the property line or very close to it without the proper setback, so do we create a problem for them, or did they create a problem for themselves, or is there any problem at all?
I don't believe there's a problem.
Because we had this similar situation on Cottonwood about 10 years ago, where there was a property adjustment, a line adjustment of some sort, and there was a barn right on the line, and we had this on Roblar also, on a project on Roblar, and created a lot of friction between the parties, but there's no problem at all here.
The person who contacted me about the oak trees was Nan Deal, and that is the woman who lives in this house here. And she came in, and we sat down for about an hour and talked about the project, and I listened to her concerns, and she didn't have any concerns related to the project itself, she just wanted to make sure that the oak trees on her property were protected. And she's very aware of where the garage is located and doesn't have any concerns about that.
Okay, fine. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Briggs, and looking at the map or the picture behind you, these are the development envelopes, and is it just that it's just happened that there's no oak trees? It looks like there's been a lot of grading that's gone on here, can you explain that, please?
Sure. The project site historically has been farmed to avocados and cherimoyas, and first, it was farmed with avocados, and in talking to previous, the original property owners, our agricultural land use planner was told that the avocados were underperforming, so they switched over to cherimoyas. And, you know, obviously, the avocado stumps were mostly ripped out at that point, so there has been a lot of historical grading in this area due to the transition of different orchards in and out of that area.
So basically, if you look around, it's been, it's been down to here, I guess it looks like that that's what's happened.
And even further.
Oh, okay. All right, fine, thank you.
Mr. Cooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Briggs, good morning. Just walking the property, it is unusual. There is room to build the homes in the one segment where the development envelopes are set out, but there were comments, I think, in the staff report that the site was hidden from viewpoints to the north, or from the north looking back toward the south, and I guess that depends on what's built on these development envelopes, but I definitely could see through and among the oaks to other residences on Shepherd's Mesa and on the north part of the hill. So I do think your condition about the Board of Architectural Review taking a close look at this is going to be important. There are two other factors with regard to visual that concern me. One is, while we've protected the oaks against damage during construction, is there any way that we can protect those old oak trees in the middle of the lot from destruction for view purposes by the future owners of either of these parcels? by the future owners of either of these parcels?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cooney, do you mean protect them from a future owner just going out there and cutting them down?
Yes.
Well, in the coastal zone, that kind of tree removal would require a permit. Of course, we can't watch the property 24 hours a day, but that would require a permit and likely not be approved. So unless someone was willing to, you know, go out of bounds, so to speak, we, you know, future permit would not be approved for the removal of those trees.
What is the standard for requiring a permit in the coastal zone? Is it the size of the tree?
I believe it is, I believe it's generally described. It's not specific to oak trees. I believe it's any, okay.
Yeah, we can move on. The concern is that the oaks do provide screening for future residences when viewed from off-site. And if those oaks are removed by the property owners, the eventual residents of these homes in order to get a clear view toward the mountains for them, it will change the appearance.
Sure.
And they'll stick out, because the only place that they can be built is right on that ridge. So that's one concern. The second concern is in negotiating my way back, the road continues to narrow as you get closer to the property line. And the avocado trees on both sides of the road are old and appear to intrude on the actual paved surface. So if those sections of the road are supposed to be widened to 16 feet to allow this development, my concern is, you know, are we satisfied that the property owner here has ample legal rights to remove those trees or trim them back to allow a wider passage?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cooney, I believe so. The property owner who owns the properties to the south that you're speaking of is, how should I say, not a friend, but a, he knows Mr. Schillinger. They speak to each other often. And they actually planned this project together, so they contemplated the location, the width, and the possible tree removal associated with the future road improvements. And he does have the right to use the underlying easement in that area, so I don't anticipate any trouble there.
Okay, I guess I'd rather not rely on personal relationships, but if you're satisfied, there is an adequate easement to allow the width of the road to expand to 16 feet. That's the limit of our concern.
Mr. Brown.
I think Ms. Black.
Mr. Chair, if I could just answer the question about tree removal permits in the coastal So the section that I'm looking at is Section 35140. And the purpose of this section is to regulate removal of certain trees in the coastal zone. And those include removal of trees which are six inches or more in diameter, measured four feet above the ground, and more than six feet in height, first of all, and are either located in a county street right-of-way, located within 50 feet of a major or minor stream, oak trees, or trees used as habitat for monarch butterflies. So it's not every tree in the coastal zone that's protected by the tree removal provisions, certain trees.
I was concerned particularly with oak trees, so it would appear that ordinance does apply and would require a permit.
Mr. Brown.
Thank you. How would somebody buying this property, if they weren't familiar with the particular provisions that you just read, Ms. Black, know that they weren't allowed to cut down trees without a permit?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, they would be in the same position as everybody else in the coastal zone.
Right, so they might not know and might just go ahead and...
Possibility.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Seeing no more, oh, Mr. Cooney has another question.
I had, just to follow up on the oak trees, is it possible, as we often do with noticed property owners regarding agricultural urban interface, to include a notice with regard to the ordinance requiring permit for removal of oak trees?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Cooney, we do have a tree protection plan on this particular property, and if you wanted to add an element to that plan that just notified people they had to get a permit, that would be fine. But I think that's the added protection in this particular case is there's a tree protection plan associated with the permit, and that would be disclosed when people are purchasing the property.
Mr. Chair, just to follow up, I, my concern in visiting the property is that, number one, I think a future owner could be tempted to remove one or more of the elderly oaks which spread across the property. And if it was just an occasional, excuse me, an occasional tree, it might be a different situation. But the oak trees on this property form part of a continuous woodland, and I think it is a valuable resource that we need to take into account in considering this project. It's an odd situation. The slope falls off quite drastically to the north where the trees are, so that development would not necessarily be permitted. But there's a natural temptation, I think, to intrude on oak woodlands for residential purposes. So as long as the construction stays within the development envelopes, then the major issue is removal of trees for view purposes. So I do think it's worthwhile taking extra precautions to make sure the future owners are aware of their obligations.
Mr. Brown.
Can you tell me the form of this advisement or passing on of information to future property owners? How would they know? They buy the property. Is there a document that says, when you get at some point in the purchase process, that says this is what you're allowed or not allowed, or what hoops you have to jump through?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, the conditions of approval associated with the project would be recorded with the map, so anybody buying either one of these resultant parcels would have those disclosed.
Okay, seeing no more questions. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation? Go to the microphone, please, yes.
Hi, I'm Rick Schillinger. We have no objection to any conditions for the oak trees, because we also value them as a resource and share the same concerns and have no intention of removing them. But I would like to clarify, we do have the right to trim them, right? I mean, you know, it's good for the trees. My neighbor is already, you know, who is concerned with the oak trees, has pointed out that she'd like to see them trimmed for their health, because I guess there's been some sort of moth, oak moth activity or something that's affected the health of the trees, and she's done the same. So she pointed that out to me just in the last few days.
There's no problem with you trimming the trees, so that's fine.
All right, thank you very much.
Oh, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, Commissioner Valencia.
Yes, I have a question. You don't have any problem with a garage on the property line on the...
No, we did what we could with that. The garage was built in 1936, and at that time, I think it would be what I guess you guys call legal nonconforming. I don't think there were setbacks at that time. And Nan Deal, who lives next door, has lived on that property. She was born in that house in 1936. And so I don't feel it's my right to tell her what to do with her garage, and she's...
Even though it's on the property line, you don't have any problem?
Well, it's not on the property line, but it's near it, yes. No, I have no problem. I don't see what I could possibly do about it that would be reasonable.
Thank you. I just want your comments on the record. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, and now, is there any public comments, speakers? Commissioner Cooney?
There are none, Mr. Chair.
In that case, I will close the public hearing and come back to the Commission for Questions and Deliberations. This is a third district item. So Commissioner, is it the first? Okay.
We need to get you to do more site visits, Mr. Chair.
Well, I was just looking at our report, and it says it's third district in my report.
Oh, how misleading.
Yes. Am I correct? Oh, there we go. Gotcha, sorry. Wrong page. Okay, first, Mr. Cooney, how would you like to proceed?
I'd be happy to receive the comments of my fellow commissioners.
Mr. Valencia.
Mr. Chair, I don't see any problems with this project. It's just very straightforward. Thank you. And I'm glad to see that the property owner doesn't have any problem with the garage. I thought that was a major problem, and I'm glad it's on the record so that future owners wouldn't complain about the situation. Thank you.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes, I don't see any problems either. I was interested in the consideration of the ag buffer zones, and it looks like that's been taken care of. They are in place as far as protections, and that the owner will sign off to preserve those ag buffers. I was also interested about the artifacts, but that too seems to have been mitigated by the measures that are included. There are some easement and map accuracies, I think, that have also been resolved. I read the letter about the oak trees, and I think that sounds as if, you know, that issue has been resolved satisfactorily, so I think I'll be okay with approval.
Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the additional protections for the oak trees and the information that future property owners will have, so that they know that this is an important resource. And also, the archaeological resources, I'm glad to see that that's obviously been included and should be included. But I was, interesting, I was telling Mr. Briggs about this project, is that I knew the Baylors, actually, from which this property came, so it's kind of an interesting history to see these lands divided. But anyway, there you are, so we hope that future property owners will be as good stewards of this land as the past ones have been, and hopefully that these conditions that we are adding will help them be those good stewards. So I'm in support of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. And for myself, I'm prepared to support the project. An issue to the garage on the adjacent property, if the garage is not intruding on this property, I'm not sure there's a problem. I mean, the reality is, I'm not sure what the setback was in 1936, but there may not have been one, in which case, there is not a problem here. If the garage is actually encroaching into the property line and sits on, I would have some concern, and I would suggest that they either move the lot line a little bit or make some adjustment for it. But unless it actually encroaches, and where the problem will come up is when this lady tries to sell the property later on, you know, if they require an alternative title report, it's going to be a bit of a problem. But if it's not across the property line, and it's just, it doesn't conform to today's setback, I don't have a concern about it at all.
Mr. Chair, let me just add one more bit of information to the record. The property line, or the garage is completely located on Nan Deal's property.
Okay.
And in addition to that, the access into the garage is from within the Deal property, not from the Schillinger side or from the south. She drives into her property and then pulls into the driveway or into the garage from this side.
Right.
So we don't have people walking across properties.
So you don't have an encroachment here at all?
No.
You just have, it just doesn't conform to today's setback?
Exactly.
So that's not an issue. So, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, and Mr. Briggs, did you not tell me that they altered the garage to get off the property line? You might just...
They did, they did.
They took off the side, or what did they do?
Yeah, they cut out a portion of the southeast corner.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Cooney, we're back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This property sits in an area which is developing. During our time on the commission, it was all part of the avocado primarily area of Carpinteria Valley and represents the ridge specifically that separates the valley from the coastal terrace. And we've seen a number of developments. This is really a quasi-rural infill, if you will. So I believe that, given all of the concerns that Mr. Briggs has carefully addressed, and I want to add, as I usually do with projects assigned to Mr. Briggs, I always feel comfortable that he anticipates the issues that would be of concern to this commission. Given that, I am prepared to make a motion in accordance with recommendations of staff as set forth on Page 2 of our staff report, including the revised findings Mr. Briggs has included today, and also, of course, including the additions and modifications to the conditions we've discussed at this meeting.
Second.
First and second. Any further discussion? I think we're ready for the question, Ms. Hoplin.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Blough?
Aye.
Vote carries 5-0.
Great, thank you. Do we need time to sit up for the second item? Take a five-minute break, thanks.
... and policy initiatives, and direct staff to forward any comments to the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. And Mr. McGinnis, are you doing our staff report this morning?
I am. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. As you'll recall, on January 21st and 28th, you heard presentations from us on our work program, including briefing on the Climate Action Strategy. This item was continued today to allow your commission additional time to discuss project priorities, which we're requesting you forward to the board for their consideration. At last week's hearing, Chairman Blough, you requested that our office prepare a preliminary scope of work for a county-wide analysis of agricultural lands, which would be in lieu of the regionally-based rural region plans proposed in the work program. We did that. We took our best shot at it, I will say, in a day's time, based on the direction and input that you provided to us at last week's hearing. And that was distributed to you on, I believe, Friday of last week. So today, and we're certainly happy to answer any questions, or if we hit the mark or didn't hit the mark, and we can adjust accordingly. But we have added that project to our list of potential new projects. We hadn't planned to provide a presentation on that, because it is what it is in the work program, and again, we can answer any detailed questions you might have. So really, today, after the two previous dates and hearings and discussion, we're here today with our same recommendation, which is that you provide, identify which projects you feel are of the highest priority, and forward those projects to the board. The total available resources that are in our office, based on the budget that has been submitted, is 6.81 full-time employees available for new projects. And this may or may not change, depending on a number of factors, which I've mentioned previously. But this is the number that has been submitted in our budget as of today. And what we've done here is we, you'll see on the screen, based on Commissioner Valencia's recommendation in the last hearing, which I thought was an excellent recommendation. And we have a matrix which shows the potential new projects, the required resources for those projects. And we thought we could use this as a working live tool to receive your input and to help us through this process of prioritizing projects. Just as a note, this essentially is the same tool that we use with the Board of Supervisors when we go through our budget deliberations and hearings. As you may have followed last go-around with the Board of Supervisors, there were a whole host of potential projects that were up for consideration, and there was a process to prioritize those projects. And this same tool was used. The way that it was done there, and I think might be a helpful process to follow today for your commission, is basically to go through each of the projects and... for your commission, is basically to go through each of the projects and to get an indication of which of those projects you've, each of you feel are of the highest priority. And if a project doesn't receive a majority or more of interest from the commissioners, then we can move it down to a lower line, and then when we get to those projects, which your commission feels are of the highest priority, then we can prioritize those. So that's what I would propose, and we can help work through this real time with you on the screen to facilitate that process, if it's a process that you should wish to follow and feel would be helpful to prioritize your recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. So with that, I will, we can certainly answer any questions, further questions you may have on the projects or work program, and then I would suggest we move to the process of prioritizing, which, if any of these projects you feel you want to recommend to the Board of Supervisors.
I think what I'd like to do with my commissioners' concurrence is, I've got two speakers, maybe I'd like to hear from the two speakers first, and maybe we could delay our questions until the two speakers.
Okay.
That might give us more information or create more questions than we ask. So the first speaker I have is Mr. Chamberlain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, Commissioners. I am Willie Chamberlain from Los Leves, and I spoke to you last week, as you recall. I'm not sure if I am up exactly on what planning is, is referring to for this week on the agricultural planning. However, I do have the staff report that I picked up back here, and I still am extremely concerned with the approach that the long-range planning is looking at to try to help devise a plan for you and other county regulators to see what could happen on different pieces of agriculturally zoned land, so that perhaps other uses could be planned in the future. I still see in here where it looks like there's going to be individual analysis of every parcel of agriculturally zoned land. Thank you very much, Mr. Government of Santa Barbara County. We are not the USSR. State farming failed in the USSR because of centralized planning. I do believe that it is the role of county government to set up classifications to where then decision-makers can say, what is appropriate uses non-agriculturally and so forth as we go down the pike. But please, don't set about a program that will go in and individually analyze every parcel. That's not, I don't believe, a role of government, and particularly Santa Barbara County government. As I say, come to the Ag Advisory Committee, we will help you devise a way to try to, to meet the concerns that are being presented, and that county government does have, I shouldn't say trouble, difficulty in trying to come up with, with reasonable land use alternatives. I think the goal is applaudable, but I think what I see outlined in this staff report is absolutely the wrong way to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lunsford.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I'm Mike Lunsford with the Gaviota Coast Conservancy. I'm very pleased to see the Gaviota Coast Rural Regional Plan up just underneath Climate Action Strategy. I hope that reflects a priority. I wanted to bring your attention to the fact that we are now seeing the breakup of the large ranches on the Gaviota Coast. We are at a, at a transition time between those large bucolic landscapes with working agriculturists owning the properties. We're seeing this change to those landowners not being farmers and ranchers, and the farmers and ranchers not being the landowners. We're seeing examples of the Tahiguas Ranch being broken up. We're seeing examples of the La Hoz Vargas Ranch with their lot line adjustments and so forth, and the big four to five acre development envelopes that they've applied for. We're seeing Eagle Canyon Ranch, the same kind of thing. So we're seeing this, this change, this breakup of things. We don't have a lot of time. We can't do business as usual and preserve the rural character of the Gaviota Coast and its biological importance. We must act, we have been waiting and waiting and waiting to do something meaningful with, with the general plan policies, and to treat Gaviota Coast with the dignity that it deserves. It is a very regionally significant area. I believe the facts will show that in the Southern California coastal Mediterranean biome, it is our last best chance for a biodiversity safe harbor. It is the last place where there is active agriculture with a long history. So we, we have, I know this is a terrible budget time, to be doing, you know, starting an initiative, to funding something, but please hang on to what opportunities we might have and try to, let's work together. The community is in the process of trying to put some priorities together, we can bring that to staff, and let's see what we can accomplish together. There are more threats or more things happening that threaten the Gaviota Coast that I have time to express to you, so thank you for your, your concerns.
Thank you. And now I'll bring it back to the commission for questions. Commissioner Brown? Oh, I'm sorry. That's all right. I didn't close the hearing, so. Lauren, Lauren, Lauren Hansen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, Commissioners. My name's Lauren Hansen, I'm a Director on the Galita Water District Board, but I'm not here in that capacity today. I've just come from a water district meeting, so I hope to speak to you about the Climate Action Strategy. I hope this is the appropriate time to do that. I was very encouraged to see that as the number one item on the county's list, and I sent a letter to your committee last week on that subject, but I just want to, to say today that I, I hope that it remains the number one item in the form that it is in. I think, from everything that I've read, this is the most important subject that you can be dealing with, and certainly the most urgent. And I'm sorry, I'm a little out of breath from rushing here, but, you know, the, sitting back and thinking about it, I don't think is something that you have the luxury of doing. I think you need to get on it now, and I think what the county is presenting is a very reasonable way to do it, and I hope you will accept the, the recommendation as presented and send it to the board with your full approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now I'll bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. I, I had some questions on the information staff presented in, in the addition, and with the additional material. And I guess what I don't understand is where the, the goal, well, first of all, last time they talked about that baseline study, I think it was the Ag Advisory Committee, we haven't really been part of that. I don't know what, what that's involved, and I presume there's information in that that sort of pertains to some of these issues. Well, it would have been helpful to have known that, and I guess the Ag community knows all about that, since it's been going on for a couple of years. But my, my interest here is that the language in one of the goals is to determine ag viability, opportunities for diversification. I'm going to stop right there. Is this an agriculturally related issue, in that, is it, what does it mean by ag viability and opportunities for diversification? Is the diversification in a different kinds of ag, or what, what does that mean?
Chairman Blau and Commissioner Brown, in, in this circumstance, ag diversification and intensification relates to a couple of things. One, it relates to the present condition of agriculture. We noticed, noted in the last agricultural census that 57% of county farms had losses. Also, the sheer amount of agricultural land, there is currently 800 and, excuse me, 8,844 agricultural parcels in the county, out of a total of 128,000 roughly parcels in the county. But those 8,840 represent nearly 80% of all land in our county. So agriculture has not only a steep history and tradition, but it is an extremely valuable economic industry for Santa Barbara County. The number of farms themselves has decreased 18% in recent time. And agriculture as a whole has changed, with new technology, with new markets, global competition, consumer preferences, et cetera. Ag itself is going through a transition. So the second component really relates to our agricultural element, which the primary goal behind the agricultural element is to encourage and support agriculture and intensification of agriculture where possible. So viability and diversification goes not only to support the goals of the current general plan, but also to look at how we can support agriculture in this transitional time, giving the facts that we see on the ground, and the relative relationship of agriculture in Santa Barbara County to agriculture not only in California, but, but around the world.
So I would take it that it's not about development on ag land, I mean development, structural development on ag land. It's not about building skating rinks and things like that, or whatever. It's more about ag and how ag can either be intensified or enhanced for the farmers? Is that, is that, am I going down the right road here?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, I think that defining development is a whole issue in, in and of itself. However, I believe that it would lead to the identification of the need for further development of ag-supporting structures, whether it's coolers, whether it's processing facilities, et cetera. And then I also believe that this type of study would identify lands in the rural area that are zoned agriculture, that in fact have not been farmed, have not, are not viable, and are not well-suited for agriculture. Now, that's where we stopped with this analysis, and we would expect that with that type of report and findings, you could look at and you could say, these are the lands that are well-suited for agriculture, and this is the type of intensification or development of activities that would further support those agricultural practices. And these are the lands that in fact are not as viable or viable for agriculture, and that would be then another phase of work beyond this piece, which would then be a policy discussion of, well, if it's zoned ag and it's really not ag, what should it be? So, and, and how much of the land that's zoned ag is not in fact viable for ag? That's what this study would tell us.
Mr. Cooney. Mr. McGinnis, when you came to us with the initial list of suggested new projects, you had a number of rural region plans, Lompoc Valley, San Inez Valley, Gaviota Coast. How would those efforts differ from what has been suggested as another new project, an overall survey of, of ag property in Santa Barbara County?
If I could add to that question, because it was going to be mine too, if we were to do the rural agri-diversity study, would it lessen some of the FTEs for those other, other listed projects? Because I would assume that you're going to do that kind of an analysis within those other projects that were discussed, so just, just add to his question.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cooney, first of all, the, the nexus between the two, really, the rural region plans would be comprehensive land use plans for the given region. So yes, we would look at agricultural activity, but we would also look at all of the other land use issues and factors that are affecting that region. What does the community want that region to be? What types of activities do they want to see within that region? So it would look at the broad spectrum of land use policy considerations, not just agriculture. The rural agricultural diversification study would not be focused to any specific region, but would look at just the primary piece of a comprehensive policy discussion, which would be, what are, what is the agricultural parcels, its viability, and the development on those parcels to support agriculture? And that would be a countywide look. So it's a different approach to focusing on just agriculture, the industry of agriculture, rather than a region and all of the policy ramifications affecting that region. Now, would it reduce the overall requirements for some of the rural region plans? I think that there would be some reduction, however, you know, I don't know that it would be a significant reduction, because a lot of the process that, and resource that is involved in rural region planning is related to all of the different policy considerations, the process, the public process that goes along with that. And so it would certainly inform and reduce the amount of time and analysis that would go into the agricultural issues surrounding those rural regions. However, you know, we'd still be working with PACs, as we've determined in, in the rural regions, and all, the host of all the different land use issues that we're faced with, you know, such as, I'll give you an example, on the Gaviota Coast, there's coastal access issues, there's visual impact resource issues, there's biological issues, endangered species issues, there's a whole host of issues beyond ag and ag viability. They're all interrelated, certainly, but, you know, and, and then matching that with a community's vision for where they want that rural region to, to go. So, so it's different ways, I think, of getting to the ultimate goal of what do we want our rural area to be, and do we have the appropriate policy and zoning in place to achieve that desired vision?
Are you done? Well, just as a follow-up, it seems to me they're very different than, at least in concept. And while I welcome all the long-range planning initiatives you've suggested, and, and generally appreciate the value to decision-makers of having this done, it seems to me the overall ag study wouldn't answer a lot of the concerns we've heard from the public about the development, the current initiatives for development of the Gaviota Coast, for example. Now, to, to a significant extent, Lompoc Valley is, is in the same boat, San Inez Valley also, they're all feeling this pressure, and we do see ag lands disappearing, not just because they're not profitable, but, but because development is pressing for a higher use. So my concern is that, that we do need to dive into that depth, whether we start in Gaviota or one of the other major locations, the information developed is going to be useful to apply to those other regions once we start. We, we don't have the ability to do them all, obviously, but certainly, there would be a lot of value in that. So I think you've clarified it for me, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Brown?
Is there not, in your rural agricultural diversification study, in many ways, would that not provide background for the rural region plans? Would that not inform, I mean, couldn't you not look at that as sort of a hierarchy here?
I believe it would inform the rural region plans, but it would not establish, create policy.
No.
That would be tied to whatever the vision of the community is.
Correct, but it would provide sort of a, you might have to do some of the work in that study, if you were going to take a specific region plan.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. And, and, and that's kind of get, gets back to my point, is, you know, obviously, you know, agriculture in the Carpinteria Valley is not the same as agriculture on the Gaviota Coast compared to the Santa Maria Valley. So you're really taking more of a focused analysis with the rural region plans to the specific region than, and, and you would look at all of the different types of agriculture in, in the diversification study, however, it's a, you know, countywide analysis, yeah.
Commissioner Lunsford?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, today we heard about the shortages that the county's going to have, and we're looking at our workload, and it's getting... going to have, and we're looking at our workload, and it's getting pretty short in comparison to, I remember, other years, we had probably almost approaching twice as much work as we do. So I suspect that falls across the board. So I'm wondering, I'm just asking because I don't know, but I want to know. We have an ag commissioner, we have a full-time ag planner, we have an ag advisory group, we have the Cattlemen's Association who know the other part of ag. And all these groups, you'd think that they would have the information that we're trying to put together here in this study. Isn't that their job to have this type of information continually updated, so that when somebody asks for it, they can give it to them, rather than us having to do a study about it, where they are experts in this field?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Valencio, it seems like a logical conclusion. I think that there's, the issue with that is there's a lot of information out there and available. As you've seen, as projects have come forward, and you can, some of those projects have been cited in different regions, there's a whole set of data around each of those projects, and the fact remains that all those lands have not been taken into consideration on a county-wide basis, or on a rural region basis, and matched with the determined policy, vision, and subsequent policy guiding that. So we're in a situation, and that's in fact exactly why we're recommending these rural region, or put the rural region plans before you, is because the current policies and zoning, clearly, there's discrepancies in what we're seeing people bringing forward for proposed uses on their properties, and you, the commission, is having to grapple with that. So there are a lot of resources out there, there's a lot of data available out there, and I think this would be a way in the diversification study to take, consider all of that data to make a determination, as I said, as to the, what really needs to happen from a policy development standpoint to support agriculture, and what land is out in the rural area that is zoned agriculture that, based on all the facts, is not agricultural land.
It's, you know, I agree with what you're saying. If there was plenty of money and we could get the 11 or the 13 FTEs, unfortunately, based on our conversation before, we only have money for six or four FTEs, full-time employees. And what you're talking about certainly makes a lot of sense. But if we put a, the degree of urgency in some of these areas that need this attention, it gets isolated. Instead of the big picture, you would really get isolated to the areas around 246 possibly, and a couple of property, a few properties in the San Inez Valley. And to look at the picture this big when you can look at a small picture, and get a chance to spend some of those remaining FTEs that you have on some of these other problem areas, would seem to make sense to me. I understand what you're trying to do, get the big-picture thing, but if you need 13 people to do that, and you have four, let's isolate and look at only the small things that we need to look at, make that envelope a little smaller. I'm not trying to debate it right here now, but that seems like what makes sense to me at this particular point, and I'll wait to hear from my fellow commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Brooks.
Yes, I think I want to echo Commissioner Valencio's idea here. I have the magic number of 6.81 here. And as I went down the list, and I'm looking at my priorities, and I'm thinking, I was very surprised over the weekend, I went to an event out on one of the ranches on 246, and I had two people come up to me to say that they are not interested in, you know, the rural region plan for the Lompoc Valley, which surprised me, because we go down our cumulative list, you know, on long-range planning, and we've, I've gone to so many hearings in the past several years, but the idea was, well, just honor our comprehensive plan as it is now, and we can, you know, deal with that, or let the ag community, you know, look more closely at that. Now, Gaviota is a whole different ballgame, and certainly, you know, I would like to see that as, you know, as a number-one priority. I don't know how, Chair, you're going to deal with this.
Are you asking questions, or are you deliberating here?
I'll wait then to deliberate.
Okay, great. I think the only other question I would have is, in our last meeting, I asked you to estimate the number of FTEs it would take to do the minimum required for the Climate Action Strategy, not the full-blown thing. The issue being that the state, and now the feds, as of last week, are getting heavily involved. We don't really know what the program is. And I think we had a discussion in the parking lot, this is my ex parte, a discussion with staff, I guess, and I think we discussed that it may take one FTE to do the minimum to sort of be ready for, or get started on the Climate Action Strategy. And to me, that seems to be a little bit wiser, since we don't know what the state's going to do come June and July. We now don't know what the feds are going to do, since it's now their priority, and they're starting to create new laws and presidential edicts about that. Am I correct that it's about one FTE to do the minimum required to be in compliance with state law?
Mr. Chair, in fact, at the last hearing, we did state that it would be approximately one FTE. And the, that would simply allow us to participate in the discussions. However, we would be participating in the discussions without having a strategy to know where we were going and how to try and influence those discussions. So you are correct that that would be a reduced scope. However, it would, we would not be in a well-suited position to inform the deliberations, or as strong a position as otherwise. So yes, that is certainly an option.
Okay, great. Seeing no more questions, I think we'll, oh, sorry.
Mr. Chair, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Brown.
Thank you. For the rural region plan for Gaviota, I think someone at the last hearing indicated that there's already been a lot, there've been a lot of studies and other documentation out there that would help inform probably any planning effort. Is that, is that the case, that you could sort of pick up what's been done, and that would really, would that sort of shorten, or perhaps not makes your requirement for the 2.3 FTE somewhat less, based on that, or is...
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, in fact, we have, we are planning to use all of the work that's been done out there, including the visioning process and so forth. So that's already built into the number.
Without objection from my fellow commissioners, what I intended to do this morning was to let each one of us have a short comment period here on the deliberation side, and then go through this chart, and each one of us place a priority of, however many numbers you want to prioritize those particular items, and then send that to the board, just like that.
No objection?
Great. Just to start the discussion for the deliberations, it's my intention to have the number-one choice be the rural agri-diversification study. I think that starts the regional plans for all of the other projects. And I've got to be pragmatic in saying that I don't believe we've got 6.8 FTEs that the board's going to approve. I'd be surprised if they do two or three. I mean, if you listen to discussions yesterday at the board, they're somewhere between 20 and $60 million short in the budget, and this program, if we were to do the full six FTEs, I think is about $1 million. Well, when you're 40 or 50 million dollars in the hole, and this is something that could be put off for a year. I do agree that we need to start the Climate Action Strategy. You don't want to be completely behind the curve, because there may be some opportunities for state and federal funding, although I think that's probably very unlikely. I do see the agricultural diversity study starting the rural regional planning for the other projects. I also believe it may be beneficial in changing certain policies in the county right now that are inhibiting agriculture from becoming as profitable as they could otherwise be. And I'm quite confident that despite Mr. Robert Chamberlain's comments, that's not the staff's intention to create a Soviet-style farming operation. I would envision that the ag committee would be almost the lead agency in doing the diversification study, and that the majority of our information, and it's going to come from that ag, the ag committee itself, the ag participants. So for me, the number-one would be the diversification study. Number-two would be the Climate Action Study, pared down to one, one and a half FTEs. And I wouldn't even prioritize the rest of them, because I've got no confidence whatsoever that there's any funds to do it. And I believe we're getting a good start on the ag concerns, even Mr. Lenford's concerns. I think that by doing that diversification study, even for the projects that may come to us before that regional plan is complete for Gaviota, would be beneficial in helping us to maybe turn down projects that are otherwise, that shouldn't be approved because they do interfere with ag. So those are my concerns, and I will ask my other commissioners to get their charts up there. Mr. Brooks.
Thank you, Chair Bilal. I have my list here. I would put my number-one next to the Gaviota Coast. I think I have received compelling information, and also just appeals from the general public, you know, throughout Santa Barbara County, that this should be our number-one priority. It has, and it has to be done yesterday, I would say. I think the Gaviota Coast needs a detailed work plan. Last week, we heard some presentations that it's so important to get this done, that perhaps we might even, you know, add, or not, definitely not decrease the number of FTEs, but to possibly get some interim protective measures going in the next several months, you know, while this work is being done. I went on the long-range planning site, and I thought the Lompoc Valley list was long, and then I started looking at the projects at the Gaviota Coast. I was shocked at, you know, it was just, I don't even know the names of many of them. I've heard them mentioned today. But it's, it's, it just, this needs to be done very, very soon. I read some of the letters, especially, there was one from the Coast Walk Group. These are people, you know, that don't even live in Santa Barbara County, you know, that we're talking about, the value of the Gaviota Coast. One thing I did look at the study, and I noticed that there's a delineation between the North Gaviota Coast and the South Gaviota Coast. I probably should have asked a question about that earlier, and I'm hoping that the Gaviota Coast, you know, the entire coast is taken into consideration as one entity. We have enough of this north-south business. I would like to make that recommendation. Again, maybe adding some hours, not an FTE, but to get these interim ordinances in place. We just can't do this piecemeal, case-by-case business anymore. And I think, you know, if we had just a full-blown effort on that in the next year, we need to resolve all the different issues that are coming up all the time. Shall I go on? Okay. So I would put my first priority on the Gaviota Coast. My second priority actually would be the Climate Action Strategy. I'm very glad that we had a week to go over the presentations that staff had given. I was driving down the Gaviota Coast today, and I'm listening to the radio, and they were talking about California might lose 30% of its ag land in the next several decades because of global warming, other issues. I was very surprised to find, you know, that Santa Barbara County, you know, we're not on the cutting edge of this movement. And I would like to see, you know, maybe, if we don't, if we need 2.78, I'd like to maybe give maybe half a one, let's say, to Gaviota. But I think the climate actions, the entire county will benefit from that also. I am going to speak about the Vandenberg Village, Mission Hills. 30 years we have waited. You know, I think $9,000 has been spent on that area in the last 30 years, as far as long-range planning. And I, that has to be, I guess that's going to be my number-three. And I hope, you know, my other commissioners will think about that area. We too, as I say, you know, you look at the different, if we don't do the rural region plan for the Lompoc Valley, those urbanized areas need to get some attention, because it's, we're just being urbanized as we speak. $10,000, 2.26 for the San Inez Transportation. I have been asked to rank that, and with the San Inez Community Plan, that could be tied in possibly, you know, with some of that work. And, let's see, I think...
I think you're at your 6.1, 6.8 FTEs, yeah.
Actually, that came out to 6.42. I'll give the rest to my fellow commissioners as they talk about their priorities.
Commissioner Valencio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, number-one for me would be Mission Hills, Vandenberg Village Visioning Program. And number-two would be the rural region plan for the Lompoc Valley. Number-three would be the Climatic Action Strategy. Am I going too fast? And number-four would be the rural region, San Inez Valley. And number-five would be the rural region plan for the Gaviota Coast. And...
And Commissioner Valencio, the, on the Climax, we've added two up there. One is a modified scope, and one is the 2.78 FTEs. Did you intend to...
Number-one, I'm sorry, the number-one. The one with the one FTE.
The one FTE, the modified.
Yes, I read the Climatic Action Strategy, and while I was reading it, I was watching a program about climatic warming and so on. And there's new awareness, 50% of the people that I was listening to on these programs, it was a scientific program, were saying that, yes, we have a major problem. And the other 50% said, absolutely not, it's a hoax, and so on. And at the same time, they came up with this report that they found G-15, which is a piece of ice that's broke off of the Antarctic. It's 600 kilometers long by 50 kilometers long, about the depth of about 18-story building. I mean, it's a huge piece of ice that they say they weren't aware of before, and all of a sudden they found this. So the awareness of what is available and what isn't, sometimes, it seems to be people are discovering things while it's breaking off in the Arctic, Antarctica, they're finding even more, and even severe areas, they're finding these major rivers that are underwater, that have been underwater for thousands of years, you know, trapped under this ice. And all this new technology is coming out. So while I'm impressed that people are looking at our footprints and all that, that we do have to be concerned, but is that at the urgency of what they want us to do, do we put that much effort into it? I think you need to be concerned, and you need to be a good citizen and take care, not be wasteful. But I don't think it's at the degree where they're telling us it's at. So, let's see, I gave you four FTEs there, and I think that probably approaches, well, if you need a fifth, the, let's see, I did give you five, didn't I?
Yes, you did.
One, two, three, four, five. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to start by going back a little bit. Having been on the commission for several years, where we've looked at long-range planning's efforts, part of our concern in the years past has been in support of a plan for Vandenberg Village, Mission Hills. And I know Commissioner Valencio was always the first to acknowledge that there was a need for that, and I believe the commission did recommend that in several years past. Unfortunately, that never went anywhere, despite, I think, the commission's urging and recommendations to the board. As we look at what is occurring at the present time, the county is working on five community plan, planning efforts at the moment? Quite a few and a lot, maybe more than what you've been doing for a very, very, very long time. It's not that I don't support a visioning effort for that area, I do, but I just don't think, under the certain, under the current circumstances, that we can include that at this time. What I do think is important, though, is climate action strategy, and not at the reduced level, but at the 2.78 FTEs. And the reason I say that, I think that there is no more important and compelling project than this one. The county is way behind... The county is way behind for a county that has, for many people have put forth, this county as being environmentally forward. There's been nothing done on this. And I think what we're seeing now is the effects of global climate change in our communities, in our rural areas. And this is just, even at 2.78, we're just gonna, we're not even gonna catch up. We're probably so far behind in having a program or strategies or just even information that I'm very concerned that even at the reduced level, it's just, will be peddling in place. I thought it kind of rather interesting, I talked to Mike Powers at SB CAG concerning this, because when we first discussed this, there was some talk about more of a regional planning effort. And I learned from him that they have neither the personnel nor the funds to really do, to really do any climate action strategy there, or being just more reactive. And I think that for county planning, I think that the staff here, our staff, would be the ones who would be out in the forefront. And I think that's really important. I think if anything, a climate action strategy covers the entire county in, and in fact, sort of supersedes many of the other things that, in importance that we're considering here today. So I would be, my first choice would be at the Climate Action Strategy, whatever that, 2.78 FTE. My second would be the, a Rural Region Plan for the Gaviota coast. I think that we have seen, we have, we were involved with a very large planning effort this past year. And for those of you who read any of the documentation about the importance of this region, you can't help but feel that a strategy or a plan for this area is very, very, very important. It has high awareness in the public consciousness and as we see there are projects coming forth that I think would, would benefit, in fact, that may be too late, but I think that they would benefit by having a broader vision and more specific plans for this area. So I would be supportive of those two. And I'm not sure what the final number is, but just listening to the board and knowing what their considerations are for budget next year, I, I'm concerned that we not, don't even have enough for five. But if we need a third, I guess my third would be the Rural Ag Diversification Study. You know, I'm somewhat concerned that this commission hasn't really gotten its arms around many of the issues that the Ag Advisory Committee has. And we've been sort of short-changed by not having some of this information, like the Ag Baseline Study. I think it would have helped informed our decision-making here. I kind of come so into this with just the little bit of information that staff has provided about what it would mean and what it, what this, what the study would look at. And I don't, I really don't think it's enough. So, well, that's my third. It's a tentative third because I would have really liked to have had more information so I could have really understood it better. But nonetheless, that's my listing.
Thank you. Mr. Cooney?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'll start by picking up on Commissioner Brown's last thought. She is absolutely correct that there has been insufficient opportunity for this commission to be involved in the nuts and bolts of agricultural development. We tend to get reports at the time we're making decisions about specific projects and consequently, at least I feel ill-equipped to, to make the best decision for the preservation of agriculture in Santa Barbara County. And as I mentioned in connection with a project in the San Inez Valley recently, we're not just talking about the dollar value of the crops produced or the, or the animals raised and sold, we're also talking about the value of the land itself to the greater community, the value of open space. And we haven't been putting that high enough in the priority list when we consider these projects proposed for ag land. I would welcome and would suggest that we give further thought to regularizing meetings with the Ag Advisory Committee and take advantage of what appears to be some open dates on our forthcoming agendas to meet with the Ag Advisory Committee or at least representatives of that committee on a quarterly basis so that we can do some of the catch-up that, that we haven't been able to do on a project-by-project basis in the past. Having said that, it has nothing to do with my recommendations for, for the long-range planning goals. And notwithstanding the admonitions of Commissioner Blau regarding the, the potential that any of these matters get off the cutting room floor, I will say that my priorities are the same as most of my fellow commissioners. I would put the Gaviota coast Rural Region Plan, number one, simply because I think the opportunity for acquiring some grant money to amplify the efforts of our staff would be greatest if we really prioritize our efforts on the Gaviota coast. And that would be a comprehensive planning effort that goes even beyond the time that we've projected there, but, but using grant money as, as opposed to general planned funding. And we need a catalyst to get it started and I think our recommendation to the board should be strong that, that we move in that direction. And similarly, I feel that way with regard to the Climate Action Strategy. By getting a leg up on what would work best for our county, I think we'll be in a position to seek out what I anticipate to be some government grants coming from the federal government. And if the state, if the state did more than simply pass regulations and provided some funding for studies, we'd be in a position to get those too. I doubt we'll see those in the near term. But those, those two projects, I think, stand head and shoulders. And if we do nothing else this year, I think we ought to move forward with those. But just to complete the theoretical, I think Commissioner Brooks said the magical number of 681, I think she said magical because it's likely to disappear. I would then list the two projects in the first district simply because I think the Montecito Growth Management Ordinance is something that simply needs renewal. I'm not sure of the number of, the number there, but I would think that's the very outside that, that long-range planning would need to prepare the decision-makers to continue the Growth Management Ordinance. And then, in, in an effort to show impartiality, I would put the Mission Hills Vandenberg Village Visioning Effort above the Santa Claus Lane Streetscape Revitalization. I think both are worthy and, and it would be very helpful to get the Santa Claus project started. We have a recommended .41 of staff time, but a significant amount of consultant time. It's, it's unrealistic, it seems to me, for that to move forward in this current budget climate. So if we could move forward and get off the ground, the Mission Hills Visioning with the appointment of qualified and interested citizens, I think that would be very helpful for, for ourselves in the many projects that we're going to be considering.
Any further comment? I believe this item is addressed. Staff had any comments?
Just my comment, Mr. Chair, that in fact, this is exactly what we will communicate as your recommendations to the Board of Supervisors and we appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I think it would be appropriate to, for the commission to take a motion to forward this to the Board of Supervisors.
The Chair will entertain a motion to forward this to the Board of Supervisors.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second. Jessica?
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Bookers 5-0.
Mr. Chair, I just totaled the points, giving the first number, nine points and the last one so I scaled down. And number one was the Climatic Action Strategy. Number two was a Rural Region for the Gaviota coast. And number three, surprisingly, was the Mission Hills Vandenberg Visioning Program. And number four was the Rural Region Plan for the Lompoc Valley. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We're gonna take a five-minute break and we'll get off to our last, next item.
8DVP 38, application filed on August 19th, 2008, and to approve the addendum to Negative Declaration 81 ND 77 pursuant to Section 15164 of the State Guidelines for Implementation of SEQA.
Thank you. And we have a staff report.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name's Mark Walter. The development plan for Ocean Beach Park that's before you is actually for both the development that's already out there, the existing development, which was permitted under a previous coastal commission, CDP, way back in 1981. You never received permits from the county because we didn't issue permits for this development in that area back then. So this development plan will actually act to do two things: validate the existing development, which is good, because then they can amend this development plan later if need be for minor changes, and to actually permit the new boardwalk and gazebo that they're planning to install within the parking lot. Just a very brief word about jurisdiction process, because this has come up, this question has come up before. This is in the original or retained permit jurisdiction, the coastal commission. As such, the county processes the discretionary approval, which is this development plan. The applicant then goes to the coastal commission for the coastal development permit, which they process and issue, and returns to the county for a ministerial land use permit to actually authorize the construction. Environmental review, it's actually relies on a 1981 ND that the county did. It still stands, it's still adequate for the project that is being proposed today, which is simply the boardwalk and gazebo on top of the existing parking lot. As such, what we did was we, ah, we prepared an addendum to the previous ND under SEQA Section 15164. Just very quickly, the parcel itself is right here, you have this on your handouts as well. It's located at the end, basically, the very west end of 246. Vandenberg Base is above both north and south of this parcel. On this next slide, what you can see is where the boardwalk would be located within the existing parking lot. It's at the north edge within the curb, not within the marsh, and also along the eastern portion of the parking lot, again, within the parking lot, not within the marsh. Now, because that would remove parking spaces, we don't want to decrease coastal access, recreational access, there is a new overflow parking area that will be installed, you might say, along this dirt access road that is already present along the paved road that enters the park. And so that will be signed with new signage to indicate that's the overflow parking area. It'll hold approximately 16 cars. The number of spaces that will be removed is approximately 12, and two of those will be replaced with handicap parking. Just an overall view of where this is again and what it will provide, the boardwalk, which is going to be located in this portion of the parking lot, is immediately adjacent to the pathway which goes down along here, under the trestles and down to Ocean Beach. However, as you can see in the staff report, that beach is closed for a significant portion of the year because of snowy plover nesting. Therefore, this boardwalk, which will be elevated and will be sheltered, should provide additional viewing, especially for bird watching for beach users. This is simply the schematic for the proposed boardwalk. It's rather minor. Again, this is the northern side, this is the eastern side. It's what I would term visually permeable, so it won't create any impacts on visual resources, given that the marsh and the estuary are immediately adjacent. This is the gazebo that's being proposed. It's within the height limit that the ordinance requires, and you can see benches on the boardwalk itself. Because this is a development plan, it does have to get review and approval by BAR. It already went for conceptual to North BAR. They had some comments on it and directed it to return for further conceptual review, which it will. With respect to SEQA findings, I already mentioned 15164, but in discussion with council, it was requested that we also address 15162, which we have done. On the memorandum that you received today, we are adding this finding. It would be number 1.2 under SEQA findings. Similarly, we are revising the language for Development Plan Finding 2.6, as you can see in your memorandum. So those would be revisions to the findings that would be part of the motion today. So the recommendation is to adopt the required findings for the project as revised, specified in Attachment A of the staff report, including the SEQA findings, accept the addendum to the adopted NECDAC, included as Attachment C, as adequate environmental review pursuant to SEQA Section 15164, and approve the project subject to the conditions included as Attachment B. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Before we go to that, I'll just ask my fellow commissioners for ex parte communications and site visits. Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I visited this area. Have you-
Oh, oh, sorry. Mr. Chair, I had a site visit and I drove around the entire area.
Mr. Brooks?
Chair Blau, I have visited this area often and not since this has come before me. And I also had a conversation with the president of the Audubon Society in our area.
Commissioner Valencia, questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a question. Mr. Walter, if you could put the map back up. You indicated that there would, the one that shows the parking and all, yes, that's good. You indicated that there would be a, and there, maybe we need one that shows a bigger area. Yes. Yeah, that's good. I mentioned, all this, all this area here is basically underwater, I mean, you can't walk on here or anything. All this is underwater, there's ducks all over the place and all, it's a marsh. And the water has come up on this other side, right on the other side of the road, it's all underwater also. So if you're gonna make an, a parking area there, an over, you're gonna, I mean, an overflow parking, you're gonna have to do fill of some sort, there's gonna be a fill?
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Valencia, the overflow parking area, which is along this existing ancillary dirt access road over here-
Uh-huh.
-would not require any fill. In fact, during my last site visit, this area had received a fair amount of influx from the recent rains. This portion of the paved road does flood periodically. But this, during that flooding, this dirt access road, because it's already elevated, normally does not flood. And people actually use it to get around the flooded portion of the paved road. The, on the west side of the railroad tracks over here, that side will also accumulate water, as you indicated. That's the location, the present location of a trail that goes through that area. And it's impassable during water.
Well, I went yesterday and it's been, sometimes it's rained and half of the road, half of the road is underwater. Half of the road, and on the other side, it's all flooded, there's water. So just, I know when they put the road in, they probably thought it was high enough or whatever, but it's flooded. So one of the things, there is a high demand and people enjoy going out there. The only thing I would suggest as part of this project here is that- I know when they put the road in, they probably thought it was high enough or whatever, but it's flooded. So, one of the things, there is a high demand, and people enjoy going out there. The only thing I would suggest as part of this project here is that they put some spikes up on the side of the road to show where the road is, because undoubtedly, there will be, even now or during rainy season, you won't see, the road will be all underwater. And in order for people not to go off the road, if they put up those, you know, just to, it'd probably take 10 or 15 of those big poles to, as a safety measure, it would probably help keeping cars off of the, keeping them on the road. As I say today, it's been sometimes it's rained, and it's still half under, the road is half underwater. So, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Brown.
Thank you. Mr. Walter, I appreciate the fact that Nbar saw this, and I presume that it's going back to them, but I have a question, just reading Ms. Taif's letter about the, how the benches are proposed in the gazebo looking into the parking lot. Do you have that, if you can put on the site map, please? I think it's that one. Nope, nope, the one back.
The one back?
Yeah. That one. So, if you look at the gazebo, and you can see them in the upper right-hand corner, they're looking into the parking lot. Now, why would you ever do that? I have no idea. So, I'm wondering, when this thing goes back to the BAR, I'd like them to specifically take a look at how the benches are sighted. I presume the benches along the boardwalk, the back is facing the boardwalk, I mean, the parking lot, and they're looking out, and it might be useful for them to just take a look at her email to get an understanding of how people actually use this area, because having benches look in the parking lot is, I don't get it, but anyway. So, that would be my only comment, that hopefully that we take how people actually use this area, not how some designer thought about how they should use the area. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, I did speak with Ms. Taif, and I let her know that she could go to the BAR and raise this issue with them.
Okay, but I think it would be important for them to know the commission's, if the commission has that concern, and also to see her email just about, you know, I live near a park, and I've often wondered how people, why they put benches in a certain way. Some don't make any sense, depending upon if you're looking at it, anyway, I'll leave it there, but it would be useful if they looked at it as, so it'd be more user-friendly. Thank you.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes. I agree with what Commissioner Brown just said. I know I had a lengthy conversation with Ms. Taif yesterday about moving that, moving the northwest property and just putting it over on the east side. The Audubon Society really tried out the boardwalk, the change from the prior plan, the fact that it will be up on the parking lot and limited access, the intrusion of public access, you know, people going down into the parking lot. So, they're very excited about that, and thank you.
Okay, other comments? I have no public speakers for this item. That being the case, I'll close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry, do we have an applicant? I'm sorry. This is a county project, so I assume we were the applicant. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation? Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to come by and speak with you about the Ocean Park Boardwalk Project. As Mark Walter related to you, this is a leftover piece of a project that was approved back in 1981, and we at the Parks Department are very excited to actually be able to implement this final piece. As Commissioner Brooks mentioned, one of the virtues of this boardwalk is that it's going to actually hem in that parking lot and preclude folks from just wandering off into the marsh and impacting the vegetation there. In terms of the location of the benches, the Parks Department is more than happy to orient the benches in whichever way the folks who use the park feel is most advantageous to them. We do feel we had a mix of benches looking out at the marsh, looking towards the east, as well as affording some space also for moms to be able to look back into the parking lot and keep tabs on the kids that are over by the playground, as well as by the restrooms, but that is not a big issue for us. We'd be more than happy to move the benches to satisfy those who feel that they want to have them in a different place so that they can contemplate the wonderful setting there at the estuary. Thank you.
Commissioner Brown, there's a question for you.
Yeah, thank you. If you have a playground area, is there going to be a bench there?
That is not part of this project. The project we are proposing is only for the boardwalk at the edge of the parking lot. Over by the playground, there are additional benches and pathways.
Okay, so, what you're, well, I would just appreciate if you'd take my comments, because I think having benches looking into a parking lot through cars, parents probably aren't going to see their children in wherever this playground is. So, thank you for considering that it's the users of the park and the wonderful setting, and it'd be nice to look out into that wonderful setting. Thank you.
We'll be happy to turn them around.
Thank you.
Thank you. Still having no speakers, I'll now close the public hearing and go to the Commission for Deliberations. Commissioner Brooks?
Thank you. Chair Blau, as I mentioned before, I am in support of this project. I've gotten very positive feedback, you know, from the Audubon Society, and they have several new projects and ongoing projects out there in the estuary area, so I certainly value their input. I'll hear from my fellow commissioners and make a motion.
I'm ready to support the project.
Commissioner Brooks? I'm also ready to support the project.
Commissioner Cooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I looked closely at the exemptions from the SEQA provisions, because this is such a sensitive area that I couldn't imagine we were looking to exempt any project in that area, but I was persuaded that what we're doing is actually less than was originally contemplated, and even though the negative declaration back in 1981 considered a project that was more impacted, it was fairly complete, and it's always interesting to look back in history and see how our decision-makers 20 or 30 years ago were given the benefit of consideration of these same environmental issues. So, I was in the end satisfied with the initial proposed use of 15164, but I agree that 15162 is equally applicable. So, I support the project.
Thank you, just for myself, I would support the project also. I might make a suggestion, however, since, since we seem to be in agreement that the benches need to be moved so that they're facing outward, I would make that a change in the condition, or suggest that the motion-maker might want to make that a change in the condition so that there's no confusion. This idea of the bar just looking at it doesn't do it for me. If we think that's the way it should be, let's so state it that way. So, I think we're ready for the third district to make a motion.
Okay, thank you, Chair Blau. I would like to make a motion that we adopt the required findings for the project, including the SEQA findings.
As revised.
Oh, I'm sorry, as revised, that we accept the addendum, and we adopt the negative declaration, included in Attachment C, as adequate, pursuant to SEQA, Section 15164, and that we approve the project subject to the condition, and this, the condition in Attachment B, but also then the condition about the placement of the bench.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Commissioner Cooney.
Just, we need, I think specifically, I'm not sure Commissioner Brooks didn't adequately cover this, but I think since we received the supplemental findings for SEQA under Section 15162, we should include that.
Does the motion-maker agree?
She does.
The second holder agree?
I do.
Any further discussion? Ms. Opel, if you'll call for the question.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Vote carries 5-0.
Thank you. We'll take a little five-minute break to set it for the last item. Thank you. Opel, would you read our last agenda item to the record?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of Ms. Jill Van Wee, General Services Department, to consider case number 08GOV23, application filed on December 9th, 2008, for determination that the construction of an addition of approximately 2,400 square feet of office space, including restrooms, to an existing 4,100 square feet US Forest Service light industrial office building is consistent with the County of Santa Barbara Comprehensive Plan pursuant to Government Code Section 65402.
Now, I'll ask for ex parte communications and site visits.
Mr. Chair, I visited the site.
Commissioner Valencia.
Mr. Chair, I visited the site.
Okay. Commissioner Brooks.
Yes, I had a conversation yesterday with a member of the Valley Alliance.
And for myself, I had a site visit. Me neither, as we have a staff report. Mr. Tetley, good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This improvement to the US Forest Service building is located on the San Ynez Airport, which is a general aviation airport just south of the town of San Ynez, and just west of the intersection of highways 154 and 246. The proposed structural addition is on the eastern extent of the existing developed airport. Again, it's an existing US Forest Service building, to which an addition of approximately 2,400 square feet would be added on the south, the rear side of the existing structure. It's also just to the east of the existing county fire station on the airport property. And this additional space would house the uses and employees that are currently housed in temporary trailers located elsewhere on the airport property that have been there since 2002. And the scope of our review, since it's a county project on county-owned land, is separate and distinct from an overall project that the Airport Authority has been processing through planning and development since 2003 to add hangars and other amenities to the airport as part of their long-term airport land use plan. So, under the scope of this county project, we're limited to reviewing the consistency of the project with the county's comprehensive plan under Government Code 65402. And under that, the key policy to which we determine consistency is our Land Use Development Policy 4, which requires adequate utilities and services to the site of the proposed project, and in this case, we do have existing inadequate services, electric sewer treatment and water, domestic water that is served by the San Ynez Water District, Conservation District. And although the, certainly the water that is there now is currently served, and there's some minor additional fixtures, all of the restrooms that are being proposed, and there may be some minor infrastructure improvements required to serve the addition, in general, the services are there, and there's no question that adequate water is there to serve the proposed project. So, we do recommend that that finding is met and that the project is consistent with the comprehensive plan. There's one minor correction I'd like to make to the report on the recommendation at the bottom of the page under Item 2. There's a misquoted date, talks about the memo dated August 27th, 2008, and it should reflect January 30th, 2009, which is the date of the memo to your commission. So, that's our brief presentation. We're available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the Commission? Commissioner Brown.
Mr. Tetley, in addition to the building, there apparently is an expansion of the parking lot, new parking area, walks and retaining wall.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, this graphic unfortunately doesn't show those flatwork improvements, but as you can see possibly from this graphic, there's an existing driveway that leads up to the existing structure.
Right.
And I believe that, on the north side of the building, is where those improvements would occur.
So, the parking lot that I see in the plans are just, it's just going to get bigger, or it should stay within the outline?
Yeah, I believe the area under development would remain this, not precisely, but enlarged slightly, and the number of spaces would be increased.
And what is the walkway? What does that, walks, it talks about walks, I mean, it's just all parking area, isn't it?
Right. The walkway reference, perhaps someone from General Services could identify this specific improvement there, but I believe that's related to walkways up to the building from the parking lot and to the addition.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Brooks.
Yes, thank you, Chair Blau. I have a question regarding the adequacy of the water, because it says not only that they would have some new restrooms, but also a sprinkler system. I think we'll hear from somebody that might give us clarification on the water issue for this.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brooks, I believe Willie Chamberlain, representing the Airport Authority, and I believe Mr. Dahlstrom from the Water District is here to answer any questions you may have about the water issues.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think this time we'll hear from, Mr. Chamberlain is acting as the applicant. And I have also a speaker for Mr. Dahlstrom, and I assume you're both the applicant, so you guys decide how you want to.
Well, I, Mr. Chair, I would be representing the applicant along with the county, and I believe that the Water District would be a separate speaker that certainly concerns this project and other things, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the Commission, if I may. I have quite a bit of background information, if you would like it. I know that the specific purpose for this hearing is very specific in finding consistency, and if, in fact, the resources are, in fact, available. I would also, I have a map here of an aerial that does show the airport, and I can show you more specifically how this particular building fits in. I would say that when the Airport Authority took over, there was not only the building that is used as the engine bay for the Forest Service, what was then called the Treasury's Building, to the east of it was the Road Department. The Road Department moved out. The one water meter, the two-inch water meter that the county had with the Water District, served both the treasury shed and the road yard. The road yard was torn down. That two-inch meter, we put temporary facilities in as we made arrangements with the Forest Service, and they're in temporary trailers up on the same height as the airport runway. That two-inch meter now serves both the airport, I mean, excuse me, the engine bay and those temporary facilities. Those temporary facilities will come down, and that two-inch meter will then serve the Forest Service Building, which will be both the engine bay and this office extension. The building that we're building will be less square footage than what the current temporary facilities are, and it will have fewer water use apparatus than currently is served by the two-inch meter. So, I think as far as water use is concerned, there is no problem. There is a concern, and I've talked with the Water District, as to whether the two-inch water meter will in fact allow enough water for the sprinkler systems that have to be installed, and that, I think, is just a facilities question, that whether we have to put in another line and another meter, or whatever, that is worked out in an engineering capacity. I do have a letter from the Water District that showed when we came, and before them with our CUP application, and I can show you what that is, that had 14 additional hangars plus two rows of hangars, that we have a letter from the Water District showing that water, water capacity within the district is sufficient to service. They would just need to make sure that the water line, the infrastructure, was sufficient. So, that was for a tremendous amount more water, and that plan is now not being pursued. So, I think that the water question for this particular addition is nothing more than getting the calc figured out 100%, and this can be done through the building permit process and the certificate of occupancy to make sure all those things are handled properly. A- aside from the consistency determination, I would hope.
Mr. Brown has a question.
Mr. Chamberlain, isn't really the water issue just if you, if the project needs an additional meter, isn't it just getting a can and will serve letter for the project? I mean, how does?
But I do, the Water District can tell, but I do believe that is, I hope that that is a separate question from consistency.
Right.
As opposed to the building permit itself, which is happening as we speak, but this was one of the requirements to get the building permit.
Okay, well, I just wondered, because the water issue, because you're right, it's about a consistency determination, but my, just because you were mentioning it, because Commissioner Brooks asked, I mean, isn't that all that's, I'm trying to figure out why if this, if the district has water to support the project, I mean, you could just open up your two-inch valve and let the water flow. So having additional, I mean, if you don't need additional capacity in another line, then you have the flow that you need, so that that shouldn't be.
The Water District Engineer can tell you specifically, but I understand what it is, is that it has not been determined yet exactly what the flow is that may be required by these, by the building sprinklers, the fire sprinklers within the building, and therefore it hasn't been fully ascertained if the two-inch meter is sufficient to handle that. But I think that's a question that can be handled through the building permit process and not through the consistency determination. I would like to add just one thing for a little bit of general background, if I may, Mr. Chairman. The CUP process that, well, number one, thank you, back in 2001, your commission gave a consistency determination to the airport land use plan, the ALP, that was before you at the time, and that's a requirement that we go through before we can apply for a CUP and apply for buildings. And the, so in the consistency that you gave back in 2001, included all of the things that you see on this map, the, excuse me, the blue being the existing, the red being the proposed, and so is the yellow proposed, and those were all part of the consistency determination on the ALP back in 2001. We came forward with planning and development on a CUP process, going through environmental review, that included building those things that you see in red, these being hangars, and the yellow being hangars as well, just a different classification. Going through the environmental review process, we realized that there was a lot of community concern, so we stopped, we are modifying our CUP application. And the one thing I would like to bring to your attention is, is that we have also modified the airport land use plan. We have removed from the plan, and the county's approved that, and it's on its way to the FAA, that these buildings, east of the office, the office being here, these buildings in red, and those two buildings in yellow down there are now off of our land use plan, so they cannot be a part of our future conditional use plan, and as we come back and someday modify the airport layout plan. This particular building we're talking about, the earlier configuration was where this red line is, but instead of being a separate building, it's just going to be attached on the south side of this existing blue building. Very small addition for the overall consideration, but I just wanted you to know as background what we've done to change the ALP so that hopefully you won't be concerned that we're piecemealing this project as we're moving forward. So I'm available to answer any questions that you would have, and hopefully you will give us the consistency determination and we'll be able to move forward.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Brooks, then Commissioner Cooney.
Yes, I would like to address this idea of possible piecemeal. The information that I read yesterday, I think, goes back to 2003, and I believe there were about eight different groups and private residences, you know, that got very active, you know, in that process. And when the one group got the notice for today's hearing, suppose only on Friday, and they felt that they really didn't have enough time, and there is concern that is, you know, this the beginning possibly of piecemeal development at the airport, you know, if the Forest Service comes in now, you know, for the small addition, you know, are we setting up a precedent, let's say, for the, you know, maybe next year the airport will come for something? And I'm just asking that to make sure that, you know, we, I was not aware of much of the previous history until I read the documents that were sent to me yesterday. And, you know, there were concerns, you know, there was, they did want the full EIR, lots of concerns about water, and of course, everything else. And I know today's issue is very limited, but there is that concern out there about possibly setting a precedent for piecemeal.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Chairman, if I may respond, and this is one reason why I wanted to give you a little bit background of what we're doing with the ALP and then what, how that restricts us in our future CUP use. And as I mentioned earlier, the, this particular building addition has been considered separately as far as the county's been concerned in dealing with the authority, really due to the fact that the road yard building was demolished. The office facilities for the Forest Service were put in temporarily, and then as we came back to put in the more permanent facilities for the office portion of the Forest Service, that it would not go through the CUP process, but would go through the building permit process, which this is part of. I gather this is part of the land use permit and getting a consistency determination. Sometimes I gather that these things are handled at staff level. This having some concern from the area, they decided that it should come before you, and I'm happy with that. And this is part of the operational plan that when we brought in the, we being the authority made the deal with the US Forest Service, that this completes their facility to where they'll be able to provide service for not only San Ynez Valley, but for the whole county. So yes, it is separate from the CUP, but this is the only thing that's separate from the CUP.
Commissioner Cooney.
You know, actually, I think my question's for Mr. Tetley, but maybe you should hang on in case he can't answer it. And that is just background on the real property ownership, the lease arrangements. I take, I was assuming, and this may be incorrect, that the Forest Service was leasing land from the county on which the airport sits and over which the Airport Authority has some operational responsibility, but you've worked with that, Mr. Chamberlain, could you sort that out for me?
Yes, yes, sir, I'd be very glad to. The county purchased the property back in the 40s with the assistance of a grant from the FAA, and along with that, there were certain grant compliance things that they had to take care of. They built the airport, and also they got permission from the FAA to locate the road yard there. And so they did that. Then they located, the county located the fire department, and I'm not sure in which order, and then this Treasury Shed. They turned the property over in a lease management agreement to the Airport Authority in 1993 with those facilities there, but they did not turn the operation of the fire department, the Treasury Shed, what it was called then, and the road department. There was about seven and a half acres that did not come to the authority for management or lease. Since that time, the, basically, the Treasury Shed has come to the authority, so that's under our lease management agreement, and the authority made the lease with the Forest Service, and it was a short term enough lease that the county did not have to become a part of that. And now that we're building this building, it's kind of in combination with the county, and we have a contract with the county even further, that they will be the builders, overseers of this particular project. We're borrowing about $400,000, if I remember correctly, of which the county is the, accepts the loan from Caltrans, but we have an arrangement with the county wherein we're obligated to fund that loan. And if, under the terms of the management lease agreement, somehow we walk away, the county still has the income stream from that lease and from those operations. And so it's kind of an interesting integrated operation that we have with a county that's working extremely well, and the branch of the county that handles it is General Services. So actually, Bob Nesbit is the airport manager for county purposes and being able to sign off on certain things. We operate the airport, and we have our own airport manager as far as operations are concerned. Very interesting.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dahlstrom, did you wish to speak?
Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me the opportunity to speak this morning. I'm Chris Dahlstrom. I'm the general manager of the San Ynez River Water Conservation District, Improvement District Number One. We are the water purveyor that provides water, domestic and agricultural water in the area of San Ynez, including the airport. I'm here neither, to speak neither in opposition or in favor of this particular item, but I'd like to say a few words about coordination. I think it was brought up just a few minutes ago, that some folks were, received this information on Friday. As a public agency serving water, we received this information on Monday, so it was very late coming, and not that there's any problem with it, but because we do serve water to the airport, as well as many other customers in the valley, having this coordination earlier would be much better, so we can assure that when the county makes a finding that there is adequate water, that we are also on board with that assurance or that finding, not that we're going to control it in any way, but that we need to be sure that there is adequate water. In this particular case, as Mr. Chamberlain indicated, there is a two-inch water meter that has been in place for many, many years that served the old Treasury Building and the road yard. And we have been going through a process for water service with the Airport Authority since 2000, with all the stops and starts and everything else that have gone on. In 2002, the Board of Trustees for the Improvement District made an agreement, although not a, it's a letter agreement, that the two-inch meter would serve the temporary buildings that house the Forest Service activities, and those include the restrooms and showers. Temporary now being, going on seven years, we didn't expect that to be that long, but now that there's a transition in place, we're pleased to hear that. As far as the domestic water, again, we have a two-inch meter that currently serves the Treasury Building, as well as the temporary Forest Service facilities and a small kiosk for the glider, glider operations. With this movement or this change, that temporary arrangement will be rescinded, and then the permanent water supply will be maintained with the Treasury Building itself. So there is domestic water on site. I have not, and as Mr. Chamberlain indicated, we go through our process for a water service application. We determine what is required. Water demand calculations are provided by the applicant, so we can review whether there is adequate or whether the meter size is correct, whether it needs to be enlarged or any infrastructure needs to be enlarged. The fire flow requirements are also important to us. We have to provide, when requested by the fire department, we are the agency that provides fire protection water. So that's, again, another process that we go through in this water service application. If the county defines that there are sprinklers required and they have to flow a certain rate, then we have to determine if an additional fire service is necessary, or we do allow for a combination of domestic water and fire sprinkler systems to be combined, only if that those, the meter and the service size are adequate. Otherwise, there would be a separate service. That, again, would not be necessary under this process, but it is required under our process as the agency serving water. So from my side, or from the Water District's side, advanced coordination of something that comes to this commission would be greatly appreciated, so we can assure that any information that is coming from staff to the commission is accurate, and we have certain buy-off on it. I think that's all I have to say. Again, we've been working with the county, county staff, for some time, and we have certainly worked with the Airport Authority for a long, since 2000, related to the potential or the proposed airport expansion. And now that we see this particular building redevelopment occurring, Mr. Chamberlain will certainly be talking about it, and will go through the proper process at the Water District. So if you have any other questions, I would certainly be happy to answer them.
Mr. Cooney has a question.
I just want to be satisfied, Mr. Dahlstrom, that your agency has had adequate time to discuss and consider this, because from our standpoint, you know, while we have certain statutory limitations as to when we can decide on conformity with the general plan, we also want everybody to have the same amount of information.
The, just, so you are assured, the two-inch meter that currently serves that Treasury Building, there are not a lot of water demands for that Treasury Building now. I don't have the, what would be required for water demand of the expanded area or the re-modelled, I would think that is, the remodeled building, whether, how many bathrooms. But what I do know is that the facilities that are temporary with the Forest Service, and what I'm understanding, is there will be less, less water demand based on the facilities in the new building as opposed to what is currently being temporarily served now. That meter that is in place is capable of providing 160 gallons per minute flow under normal pressures, maximum flow rate. 160 gallons per minute is quite a lot of water for any type of facility, but I would, not having the information, there would be quite a bit of water demand that would be required to meet that 160 gallons a minute. If it is required to exceed that amount, we would just look at that, what's required, and we would require an upsizing of the meter. If it is not that much, we could actually downsize the meter. So as far as fire flow, again, that's a separate item from domestic use, and that is, we are obligated to provide fire protection because we are the water purveying agency in that area, and we would, again, look at what's required for fire sprinklers.
Mr. Brown.
Mr. Dahlstrom, if you had gotten this before Monday, and let's say you got it a month ago, what would your, would the information that we have gotten in here be any different than what we see now, than what we're reading now, other than that they're all currently served by applicable utilities and services?
The, if I may respond, yeah, the sentence that said thus, "It is currently served by all applicable utilities."
Right.
And services, including, and I'll paraphrase, water, that is true. The Treasury Building is currently being served by the District at this point.
Right, but it wouldn't been any different, would our language have been any different based upon this long explanation that you provided us?
Mr. Chair, and Commissioner Brown, respectfully, I don't think that's really an appropriate question for Mr. Dahlstrom, because he doesn't write this report, we do. So I don't think our language would have been any different.
Okay.
The point we were making is there's adequate water to the site, and I think Mr. Dahlstrom's not, said anything differently, he's just said there may be some details that have to be worked out in this service.
Okay, well, that's what I was trying to get at, that there wouldn't have been any different in the language that we, that we seen here, that's all. Thank you.
Yes, and I wouldn't, as, I'm sorry, Diane, your name has changed since I've known you for around 20 years.
Black.
Miss Black. I would have only asked that in advance of having this language in, so we can assure that the word adequate is adequate and stated, that advanced information would have been provided to us, and we could have given that assurance.
If I could, Mr. Dahlstrom.
Sure.
I think normally we would, we would ask you for a can and will serve letter on a project, and you would have maybe more time to do the can and will serve letter. I think what the applicant did here was to determine that since we're going to be using less water than they're using today, that a can and will serve letter wasn't really necessary, that they were able to prove through prior usage that they have enough water. Now, the issue of the fire flow, it's a different one. In fact, it's typically not coming off your two-inch meter. You're going to have a four-inch water line that Simon used to check. You're going to have a four-inch water line, the Siamese check valve has its own meter that if you ever use it, and so I don't think that's an issue here. I think the issue is, is that clearly there's adequate water for there, whether it's a two-inch meter or additional meters. You'll determine that when your plans are much farther along. You probably can't make that determination today, because you don't have the working drawings to make the calculations. Am I correct?
That's absolutely correct. We go through a process. When the county asks us for a can and will serve upon demand without exception, that triggers our, our application, water service application process, and we go through, get the calculations from the applicant, provide the response at that time.
Right. And I think it's actually the Building Department that's going to actually review the calculations to make sure that they're within the Uniform Plumbing Code.
It triggers, it triggers, the Building Department triggers that can and will serve requirement. We provide the can and will serve letter to the, to the, to the county based on what the applicant meets for our requirements for fire service and for water service. So it's, it is outside of this. All I was indicating is that if, just as an added coordination layer to, so the county, when the county makes a statement like this, we would like to be able to assure that that's a correct statement, so.
Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
I have no other speaker slips. Is there anyone else in the public that wishes to speak on this matter? That being the case... Let me make sure here.
Mr. Chair, if I could just make one comment.
Sure can.
This is, I think some of the discussion that's occurred and the responses that you've gotten are because we're not in a typical permit context. We're really looking at a 6x402 determination. We won't be issuing a land use permit or any sort of land use action on this, so I just wanted to remind the commission. We often are before your commission with a 65402 at a very, very early stage in a project, before they've gone through and done much design work. So we're just at a different phase than what the commission typically sees.
Having no other public speakers, I'm going to close the public comment, and I'll now go to Commissioner Questions and Deliberations. Chairman, Commissioner Cooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to talk for a minute, maybe as much for the benefit of Commissioner Brooks's anything. Because we haven't had one in a while, this, this particular provision, it's always challenged to determine which subsection we're considering consistency under, and, you know, I think I, in a quick reading of Ms. Van Mollum's copy of 65402, it appears we're under subsection C. She might have a different thought. But if so, then the statute provides that we either find consistency or not within a 40-day period, or it's conclusively deemed that it is, in fact, consistent. Now, I see the application here dated December 10, so I'm not sure that all of our efforts haven't been basically academic today, but in any event, I think it is important for us to be aware that as projects come forward involving the airport, if any do come forward, that we understand the relationship of the county to the overall picture. So it, as far as I'm concerned, it's been useful, but it doesn't appear as though our finding is necessary as we've gone beyond the 40 days.
Mr. Chair, if I may address that.
You certainly can.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cooney, I believe we're actually under 65402A. It's a little bit confusing because of the terminology that's used in this section. I always have to reread it when we come up on these. Subsection C uses the term local agency, but at the very bottom of that paragraph, it says that local agency does not include the state or county or a city. So although initially you look at it and you think we'd be under C because it refers to local agency, it brings you back to A. Oh, and as to the 40 days, the 40 days was waived in this case.
Okay, well, it still provides that, that the period is 40 days or longer if the legislative body, meaning the Board of Supervisors, would extend it. So I think we're limited to considering these within 40 days, and yet it doesn't have the conclusively presumed language that subsection C does. So in any event, I'm happy to consider it today, as I said, and for whatever it adds to the process, I'd be in favor of moving forward with the determination as recommended by staff.
Thank you. Grisha Brooks.
Yes, it has been suggested, and I'm wondering, is there any possibility of continuing this just until the next meeting, so that perhaps some of the parties that, you know, had the concerns, you know, would have an opportunity to give input?
Mr. Chair, I think that's a question for the department who requested the 65402. So you may want to address that to Mr. Nesbit.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bob Nesbit, General Services Director. So it is correct that we submitted the request on December 9, and the staff from the Planning and Development Department did ask my department if we would waive the 40 days. And so to be a team player, of course, and to allow it to get onto your agenda in the normal scheme of things, we did that. Of course, we want your action to be that you find it consistent with the general plan, and we support staff's recommendation. You know, it's always easy to play armchair quarterback and say, well, if we knew they weren't going to support it, we wouldn't have given the waiver. It's not our intention to, you know, take away anyone's right or ability to speak on this, but I guess our, our thought is that it's pretty straightforward, that it's consistent with the general plan. And I just want to make it also clear, and I think it's been alluded to, this is a county project. This is not a project submitted by the airport. If it was, if it was submitted by the airport, we wouldn't be here today, because 65402 doesn't apply. So this is a county-supported project, and there has been previous action by the board that they support this project for county interests, separate from airport interests.
Thank you. Commissioner Brooks, this is a third district item. How do you want to proceed?
I'd like to hear from my fellow commissioners, and then go to a motion.
Commissioner Brown.
Well, for me, I think it's fairly straightforward, because it is a county project. I understand the concerns of some of the citizens in the valley, but I think that's a, that's a whole different project. This is, for me, it's fairly straightforward, so I, you know, I support it. And I appreciate, you know, normally, as, as has indicated, these consistency determinations are done within 40 days, and here we've been given this additional time so that we could take a look at it, the public could take a look at it. And I don't know, I'm ready to go forward and support it. Thank you.
Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ready to go forward. I don't see any problems.
Just for myself, I have just one question. Does anybody see this project again before it gets built?
Mr. Chair, Bob Nesbit, again, yes. Actually, because it's a county project, the Board of Supervisors has to award the construction contract, and we have that tentatively scheduled for their meeting on the 10th.
Great, thank you. So if there is some problem that Commissioner, that you are concerned with, Commissioner Brooks, people have an ability to voice their opinion on the 10th. So I'm prepared to support the project. Commissioner Cooney, do you make a statement?
No, I already indicated, I think this is not the place to address the larger issues of growth at the airport. We, we will have a chance to do that down the line.
Commissioner Brooks.
Okay, then I'll make the motion, that we support the recommendation to determine that the proposed US Forest Service building addition is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and we transmit the consistency report required by 65402 to General Services and the Board of Supervisors.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any deliberations on the motion? Ms. Hoppen, will you read the roll call?
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Blough?
Aye.
Vote 40.
And that concludes today's meeting. Thank you.